While you do that, I will read the, since we are in open session, I'll just go right ahead and read the virtual meeting introduction. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and streamed on Cohasset 143 TV as well as Cohasset's Facebook. Momentarily, the public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom. Please note that comments will not be monitored on Facebook. If you're registering on Zoom to speak, please include your full name and address for the public record. The chair will review the questions and if appropriate, direct them to a participant for response. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. As I said, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. And the first thing we are going to do is the pledge of allegiance. And I think Jack has a flag in his background. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know that's visually awkward. First up is a public comment. So welcome to those of you who are watching. I know there's at least somebody who would like to make a public comment. And we just came out of executive session. And we are happy to see you. I think Chris, can you promote or Tracy promote Peter Pescatori? He had reached out and said he wanted to speak during public comment. Peter, when you get in, if you could just give your name and address for the record. Chris, you're muted.
He's joining us shortly.
Great. You there, Peter? We do look forward to the day when we meet in person.
I don't see anything else in the Q and A, Diana, monitoring.
Yep, thank you, Carrie.
So Peter is showing no microphone, so he may have to log out and log back in. If he wants to just type his question, he can, but we're not showing a microphone, so sometimes it doesn't always connect.
Yeah, Peter, I think Peter just wanted to update us on the trail markers that were put in to, I think it was Willwright Park. So Peter, if you can hear us, we're going to move on. And if you come back in, I will take you out of order, if that's okay with the board. Just so you can update us on the the trail marker work that's been done by the Open Space and Rec Committee. Okay, so let's move on to the next item, which is the state election warrant. Chris, can you just, I mean, this is, this is standard operating procedure. We need to do it, but one of the things I would like, if you have the information, is to let the public know and us know about the dates. You know, that people will be expecting their mail-in ballot if they requested that, or when the early voting begins.
So we actually are in preparation of a video that will do all of those wonderful things. So the clerk's office took part with our communications firm in shooting a video, which has, which I'm afraid I cannot unveil for you tonight because it's still in production. But we shot it at the end of the week and it shows how to, how to vote, where to vote, chose the ballot box. You know, they had to drop the vote, where to drop the votes outside and all the dates and stuff are in there. So I'm hoping that will be unveiled Thursday, I think is the goal. I believe the first day of early voting is actually the 17th. And I see Carrie nodding her head. And I believe the registration deadline is the week after that. And but all of those dates and all that will be in this cool video that's been produced. And again, I was hoping, unfortunately, the person, the team producing it wasn't able to get it done for us. So for tonight, we'll have it by the end of the week.
So can you, when that's available, can you make sure you share it with us so we can put it on our social media platforms in addition to whatever the town does?
We will share it far and wide. So the goal is to have it as widely distributed as possible. I see Carrie raising her hand.
Yeah, are we going to be doing the same thing with the drop off mailbox in front of Town Hall? The same thing that we did for the primary?
Yeah, in fact, we're actually wanting a bigger box.
Great.
Because, because we're not just, it was originally, you know, when we put it in seven years ago, it wasn't used a lot, but obviously it's been used a ton lately. People are putting all kinds of things in there. And, and it's during, you know, the, the, the early voting period runs two consecutive weeks, like every day. So people are here on the weekends, step through the box. Instead, we decided a bigger box would be better, particularly as we get closer. So I believe that's going to be installed in two weeks. There's a backorder on everything right now, if you're not. And Carol's office was great. They went out and actually they were pursuing additional grant money. So they found a grant that's going to allow us to pay for this new box, which is awesome.
That's terrific.
So that'll be a ballot box and it'll also be the regular drop off box for town, right? You can put bill payments and everything else that else in there too. So it'll be, I think it's about twice as big as that, the one that's out there now. So that will stay until we're ready to install the other one. So, but that will be, Carrie, that'll be, it'll be, in fact, if you get absentee ballot at home now, I know the mailing has got, has started to go out. Start to receive them. You can drop them that box now. So you can either put it in the mail, but if you're in town and you have your absentee or at-home ballot, you can just drop it in that silver box today if you have it.
Okay, great. So we, we need, we do not need to vote, is my understanding, the election warrant? Because this is part of our just general responsibilities, is that correct?
I believe you just have to officially sign it.
We just have to officially sign it?
I believe it's being distributed to all of you like we've done with some other documents. I think, and I'll confirm that with Tracy in just a second.
Okay, so this is basically just the, the, like the warrant for town meeting outlines the, the votes that will be taken. It's from the,
It's just, yeah, it's literally what you're just signing off of the ballot because technically it's an official act.
And, and so then the question is whether we should stop by tomorrow or when it's going to be available for signature?
I will confirm with you shortly if it's coming around to your home.
Okay, meanwhile, Peter Pescatori has returned. So maybe we could, Paul?
So this, not only is the ballot, but it's also the, the two questions on the ballot as well, who are on that, that warrant.
Yep. Questions one and two, it's pretty thin and it was in our packets.
So Peter's, Peter's promoted, so all he has to do is turn on his video and his audio and you can hear from him.
Peter, welcome. You turn on your video and audio and we'd love to get your update. Just that video.
I gave him the option to type the comment.
Thank you, Carrie. And I know he wants to share his good news of his committee work, so we'll give him a minute.
Takes a while when you do it one finger at a time.
So are we on Facebook or you still having trouble with that? It's got a message from residents saying that they can't find us on Facebook.
I love that our fans are asking about us, Corey.
Yeah, just in somewhat of a public comment, you know, I'm sure a lot of you have received comments from people in town just wondering about return to public meetings. And obviously that's something we can't do yet, but you know, I am anxious and as soon as it's healthy and safe and recommended that we're able to do that. I, I hope you're the first one there. Good evening, one second, but at the same time, this uncomfortable format does reach out to a lot of people. And I think that will take a lot of positive takeaways from this. Peter, the floor is yours quickly.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't get the video to come on, but here we are. I just want to report that the Open Space and Recreation Committee has finished one of its key action items for the Open Space and Rec Plan. And that was to provide signage for the trails at Willwright Park. And we actually did the paper reservation as well. So over the last two weekends, the, the committee plus the help from the Boy Scouts, put up all the signs in Willwright, marking the trails, giving people directional signs, how to get back to Forest Ave or Main Street, et cetera. So they're all done, completed the committee. They planned the whole thing. Did, you know, scope out all of the trails, the names of the trails and get the appropriate signs needed to cover the park. Organized the manufacturing of the signs and put them up. So that's what I wanted to report.
Thank you, that's, that's terrific. And you guys have been pretty busy the last month, five weeks.
We're staying busy, yes, that's true.
Right, okay.
I think there's a whole bunch of people that are never going to get lost there now. After the number of years I've lived here, there's one person a year that gets lost.
Oh, people get lost there. I, I directed several people to how to get out of there. So, and we've got, you know, there's many, many more people walking in the parks now. Because, so it's, it's actually, there's a lot of new people who don't know the trails. So I think this is very timely.
Great.
So again, have a good meeting.
All right, thanks, Peter.
Good job, thanks.
Chris, did you have a chance to find out how we're, where to sign this election warrant?
So they're going to be coming knock you in your door. So during, oh yeah, it's this evening.
Okay.
Is everybody at home as usual? I think so, right?
Yep.
I, I'm in my office, which is in the, in behind my house.
Right.
Okay, I'll let Trace, well Trace is watching, so she'll let the police officer to come knocking.
Well, maybe if we have an efficient meeting, it'll be after the meeting, which would be a lot easier.
Okay, they haven't been here, you have to come, they have to come here to pick it up and they haven't done that yet.
I got it, okay, that's good, that'll be a good timing. Corey?
Chris, did you sort out the, the Facebook streaming or are you still having trouble with that?
Yeah, I'm still having trouble. I've tried three times and it gets me to the page, it sets it up and then it stops.
And what page is it? Because we've got town of Cohasset and we were on constant live streaming, but did you?
I know, I, I've tried it, I've tried it both ways and it's not, it just won't do it. So I'm going to try it again, but it's being very temperamental tonight and I don't know why.
Could you just put up, I'm sorry, would you mind putting a post on the live streaming? Just say that, you know, we're working on it that way. People aren't confused about where it's supposed to be. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up on our agenda is the approval of the letter to the FAA. As you probably know, we also received an email from Ralph Dormitzer, who is the appointed member of the town, to the Massport Logan Airport Committee. He endorses, this is a regional letter advocating for, or approving the study that was done by the FAA. And unless there's any questions, which I will not be able to answer, I would, you know, ask you for any comments and then if not, a motion to approve signing on to this letter.
I'll just, I mean, quickly, just, I went over it and, you know, basically for the public out there, it's, it was a study for a different flight path, which brings some planes farther out to the ocean and farther around Hull. A lot of planes kind of come over Hull now and this really benefits Hull more than us. And, you know, it'll have a minimum impact on us, but any impact it has is positive because it moves air traffic out towards the ocean. So, you know, I've, it's got my full support.
Thank you for summarizing, Carrie.
Yeah, this has been an issue that a lot of residents have been talking about for a while. And I do think this is a positive step towards getting some planes farther out and not as over our heads as they have been.
Well, it's, it's interesting because they, I think it used to be worse and then it got better and then it got worse again. So this is a constant battle for the South Shore communities and Rep. Moschino and mostly Hull. And, and I appreciate Ralph's work. And, and you know, we used to every few years have Ralph or every year or so Ralph come to us and give us sort of an update. Because he's, he gets himself out to Milton or wherever they have these meetings and, 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 you know, kind of fights the good fight on behalf of these smaller communities that are less impacted than some, somebody like, like Milton, but really keep, keep our concerns at the forefront. Jack?
I would, I have to tell you, I was on plane, come flying into Logan and the woman next to me, I talked to her. Turns out she's an FAA official.
Oh, interesting.
Certainly, she certainly knew Ralph, Ralph Dormitzer. So we are well represented.
Absolutely.
People might be interested in knowing, part of this is, is they've gotten technology and the GPS more fine tuned. They've been experimenting with having flight paths a little closer together and et cetera and so on. The fact that we and our fellow communities have been able to clearly state that that's fine, make it work better, but don't have planes, you know, going low and slow over Cohasset. Good work.
Great, thank you. All right, so this, this letter is being signed off on by the, by the town managers of the communities that are participating. So if we could just maybe make a motion to support, Chris, support this letter and allow the town manager to sign off on behalf of the town?
I'd like to move that we support, what's, how should we describe the letter?
The, the regional letter.
Town, is it tri-town letter?
Yep, the, the tri-town letter to the FAA.
I'd like to move that the town of Cohasset supports the tri-town letter to the FAA.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Great, all right, that's all set. Next is our series, what I hope will be a series of check-ins on master plan implementation working groups and any other committees that, that we can, that we are liaising with or that we can make a comment on. And I, I'm hoping that we can put this at the beginning of most agendas, just, just as a, as a touch point to see if there's any action that's going to be forthcoming. And that'll help me as, me and Carrie as well, kind of look, look ahead at agenda items. So this week, speed round, if you have nothing to say, that's okay. But we'll go through the committees that exist and the first is economic, is it vitality? It's economic.
Economic Task Force.
Task Force, right.
Right, it's very specific. So, so we, we've got our questionnaire finished and business owners in town should expect to see that in their inbox later this week. We're asking everybody to fill it out basically by next Wednesday, just a week's time. It's a short survey, about two minutes. We've had a few meetings of the group and we've got some initial ideas that are pretty ground level. And we're excited to kind of start getting some input from, from business owners and, and working from there. That's our update.
Great, one, one thing, just that to kind of flag for your committee is maybe reaching out to the Cohasset Cultural Council. So the Cohasset Cultural Council is a, it's actually a state prescribed council in each town. And, and the council members are appointed by the select board. And they, their job is re-granting money that the state gives them to arts and cultural organizations in the community, which actually have some kind of a pulse, obviously. Less so today than they, they do on a regular basis. But it just might be a resource to, to get some of those folks into the, you know, into your conversation at some point. Because they're all, you know, they're support, they have access to state funding on a per capita basis. And they're going to be looking to give those to organizations that are offering cultural activities.
That's wonderful. And one thing that we've talked about and we've identified is, you know, what makes Cohasset unique? I mean, obviously there's a lot of things, but one thing that we have kind of in spades is, is the artistic cultural community. You know, with South Shore Arts Center and the different things we, we have in town, the music circus, that's really unique to Cohasset. So that's definitely, we'd love to get some input from them. We also have one seat remaining on our committee. So anyone out there who's listening, who would, who is excited about making sure that our town stays vibrant, we'd love to hear from you.
And we'll be appointing members to Cultural Council at our meeting on October 20th. So we can talk offline that, you know, there, that might be an opportunity to kind of liaise, have somebody liaise from the Cultural Council. Great, affordable housing.
So two very good things. One is that the Affordable Housing Trust now has what looks to be the final legal transfer of 808 Jerusalem Road. Once that is through, the plan would be to pursue an RFP for possible development options that are there. The other thing, the steering committee, Affordable Housing Steering Committee is looking at five separate locations in town properties for potential affordable housing locations. There's, it's a mixed group of properties. I'm not going to tell you where they are, but they're looking at a wider assortment of town versus town property, private properties and potentially mixed use. So it looks good.
With, with the goal of being on the Affordable Housing Trust with the goal, obviously, of projects that can be, come online as soon as possible.
And as, you know, Idea is to get this up and going so that there's good faith effort plus affordable housing units that are available for, to keep us under the 10%.
Yep, great. Jack, zoning.
Well, in zoning, actually, this is good to be right after Paul, because the, we're zoning and affordable housing intersect is what's called an accessory dwelling. And for those who are not up to the latest terminology, that just means a dwelling within a main, the main house that could be used for an in-law, we would understand it. Also, it could be used as a rental and they're generally smaller. And there's been some issues. However, that does a couple of things. If zoning can figure out how to make it possible while retaining our residential nature, is it allows, number one, in-laws, of course, but also elderly people, a little bit of extra income, they'll can stay in their home. Having somebody younger, you know, sharing the same house, housing lot, help for emergencies, snow shoveling. There's lots of good things and this is something that would help us bring us under the 10%, which is important for the character of Cohasset. But it does require that the, we have to figure out some smart zoning. We're also going to be dealing with the large homes, the, what's called the floor area ratio, which is basically how much square footage of dwellings that you're going to put on a lot. There's talk about the height. We can have, we allow basically 35 feet, but 35 feet in like a village historic area where houses are right up against the street is different than 35 feet from a house that has a setback of 100 feet. So there's lots of things in the zoning and our zoning really has not been updated in years. So I would encourage anybody who has some thoughts and innovative, smart thoughts to let us know because we're really open for that. So this is important and this sets the guideline for how our neighborhoods develop. And also, and people should be aware of this, it allows them to protect their neighborhood. So it retains the same character that we all want to keep.
Great, very exciting. And, and I think this was sort of the genius of how the master plan played out and how some of these working group started to spin out. Because, and, and why it's important for us to keep each other informed, because everything impacts everything else. And, and so with Elm Street Corridor, I think I updated at our last meeting that we had met and kind of divided into two areas. One sort of being more of a conceptual design ideas and then a, it's sort of a data group that's trying to collect, you know, what really are the challenges with parking and where does it exist? And what, what, what opportunities do we have to, you know, with traffic calming on Elm Street? But Elm Street Corridor, as I keep saying, is more than just the corridor. It's actually what's going on in the harbor, which clearly will impact whatever the plan is for Elm Street. And then when we were talking about parking, how does that impact the village and parking? And how does that impact the parking lot behind the, you know, the, the South Main Street properties? So, so we were supposed to have a meeting today. It was canceled for some reason. So more, more to report, but we'll just keep these conversations going. On sewer, which doesn't have its own regional, its own working group, because we've elevated it to a different level of discussion. I'll talk later in the night, but I want the board, the select board members to have an opportunity to have a conversation amongst ourselves and really dig into some of our thoughts about sewer, particularly as it relates to some of these other town priorities. And we will probably end up scheduling a meeting later in October with just that and maybe some other quick business that we need to take care of, including maybe what we were discussing earlier this evening. So, so stay tuned on that. There's a lot going on. We expect, the last we left was that we were going to hear from the Sewer Commission in November. But I want us to kind of have a roundtable discussion, public obviously is invited beforehand. So, okay. Next up is, we still have some board committee appointments. And this is, we, we appoint two Cohasset residents to the Weir River Estuary Park Committee, which is made up of people in Cohasset and Hull. And we have two reappointments. One is Dick Avery and the other is Tom Bell, both of whom have been on the committee for a few years. So if anybody would like to make a motion or have a question, fire.
I'd like to move that we appoint Richard Avery and Tom Bell to Weir River Estuary Park Committee.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Great, and we're still doing appointments. I know that we have somebody for, as Corey said, the Economic Task Force, Economic Development Task Force. We have Cohasset Cultural Council, we have Cohasset 143 TV, so keep spreading the word.
Two or three are my committees, so I don't know how I feel about that.
Yeah, I don't know, Corey, don't take it personally. Actually, that shows, that shows your diligence in finding those, those committees that really need some great energy. Thanks. Okay, so Chris, I don't know if you want to pop in. And I know that Dawn's in the waiting room. I don't know if he was planning to speak on this, but let me just give you a sort of a general overview of how we've handled the budget message each year. The budget message is really sort of a general kind of macro painting of where we would like the town manager to go with respect to building next year's budget. So the FY '22 budget. The tradition has been that the chair drafts it. I did send you all a draft tonight, but we're not going to really talk about my draft until our next meeting. But what we're going to talk about is what has been sent to us in a memo from the advisory committee. And Chris, you were at that meeting, right?
Was.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind just kind of like walking us through some of their recommendations and, and, you know, how we should approach it as a board or what things we need to think about as, as we flesh out the details of the budget message from us.
Do you want me to pop it up on the screen?
Yeah, if you want. So another, just another thing on the budget that I, you know, depending on, typically we would do this in late September, early October. We would approve it. But this year is going to be very different. We don't even have the FY '21 state approved budget. But the fiscal year that we're in, we're still waiting for those fiscal numbers, which is actually another reason why special town meeting might, you know, should, should wait till we get at least the state budget. So getting numbers, state, even a glimpse of what the state numbers might look at, look like for FY '22 is anyone's guess as to when that's going to play out. But again, it's more important that we just stay on top of it and we're doing so every month. Paul, you got to talk about those great revenues?
So, so honestly, the, the revenues were, they were terrible the previous months, but the last month revenues for September are 1.2% down from last. are 1.2% down from last year. Now, last year was, was quite a good revenue year. So it looks like the sales tax and the income taxes are starting to roll in at more recovering level than I would have thought, which is good. So that's helpful.
Kind of surprising. Okay, so back to the advisory committee's guidance, which is standard operating procedure for us as we look at developing a budget message for FY22.
So Dawn and I met with the advisor committee two weeks ago. Last, I gotta tell you, the days just flowed together.
Yeah, it's still April.
So, and they've done this for several years and they spent a fair amount of time talking. So it was a really productive conversation. So they presented a, the seven point message and, or, and the first one is actually, I think, and just, it's an important procedure. Something that I think is really good that we have, continue to follow and, and, and improve the policies. You know, with the town's been governed by a series of fiscal policies for about a decade now that we've continued to build upon. They're in the budget document. So if anybody wants to look at them. And we've continued to update them and it's, I think it's been a real important part of getting to AAA, maintaining AAA, and quite frankly, just maintaining a good, strong financial system. When you have rules, you tend to follow them, you, and you talk about them. And, and now more than ever, I think it's critical to have these. So they basically have recommended you double down and keep doing it. And we are, by the way, and we'll be reporting some recommendations for some updates on policies later this fall. The second point they made was, I think, the crux of this entire document and, and basically without reading this whole thing, which people are free to read and you all have seen is basically COVID pandemic is having uncertain impacts. We have to be very careful as we move forward. So it's more eloquently than that. And their, their recommendation is that we pay a lot of close attention to what's going on. And as Diane pointed out, the state doesn't even have a budget. In fact, tomorrow, they're going to be having a hearing to talk about where we are today. So it's going to be a public meet. And again, Paul, if you have time tomorrow, you can log on and watch it on Zoom. I believe that it's going to be live. And if you don't have the link, I'll send it to you. The, they're going to be having an open committee meeting between Ways and Means Senate, Ways and Means House and figure out where they are. And they really don't know. Now, they've committed to, at this point, keeping local aid the same, which we had budgeted a decrease. So that's been a good thing for us. That said, they can still change that. And going forward, we don't know. FY22, as I, like we've been talking about, governments are, tend to be laggy indicators, particularly at the local level. Where we, we got our impacts later and we recover later. So, so what the advisor committee said is basically pay lots of attention, be very focused and plan for and be prepared for a much tighter financial situation. So that's number two. They've continued to recommend that the town move towards a 1% reserve fund, recognizing that, you know, you may not get there today because, you know, to get from 238 to 402 would mean ripping 160,000 out of the budget. That said, it's a goal that we should continue to seek, though whether or not in the current fiscal climate, it can be achieved in one year is another question. And they continue to say, stick with the free cash, three to four percent number, really important. They can, they continue to say, hey, we're doing, we're doing good work on capital, but we're not done. We need to continue to double down on the 10-year plan, which by the way, we're actually working on now with departments. And continue to build on that. And with that, continue to work on financing. Now, we actually do have a, Dawn has created a great spreadsheet, which we've been working with capital and departments with. And all of you have seen it as well, where we, you know, using different inputs and outputs, we figure out where we are and where we're going to be as the years go forward. So we can, we continue to work, to work that, those, to see how we put extra money in that we have in free cash or if we, you know, increase our percentages, where do we get to? And then, you know, something that we've most certainly talked about, continue to maintain our capital assets. And the town last, two years ago upgraded what's called facilities dude. It's our, stop the share. It's our, it's our software that runs the work orders and runs the maintenance department. And we were, as part of that, there was a top to bottom assessment of all of our major facilities. So for the first time, we had a, 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 a log of every major component of every major building. Now, one of the challenges, some of them are already coming to say, hey, you probably should start fixing some of this. So we can't do it all at once. And said, Nick Marardi, Mark Kelly and the team are really on top of this and they're using this data to build capital plans going forward, which is great. So we, we have a really great assessment and a benchmark, which we didn't have until, you know, this past year. And we have been putting more resources and training resources and support resources into facilities unit because that, you know, we're only as good as the team that keeps it all going. So, and they've been doing tons of work over at schools, as you can imagine. That's where a lot of the resources have spent recently in terms of time and energy. They've done some work here. And if any of you have been at the town hall, you can see the work that they've done to help secure the building. You know, we've replaced some windows and some countertops and changed how the, the intake goes. So they've been doing a lot of work on things like that too. So. So that was, that was the message. Basically it was like, pay a lot of attention, which the same time, Dawn and I have been briefing them monthly, just like this board on where we are financially. So we're having an ongoing dialogue with them and okay to continue to do that monthly. And they're going to pick up a conversation as part of the long, you know, looking at the future. We're going to be briefing them on collective bargaining at the end of the month. And I believe that's a very good thing for us to do collectively with all of you in an executive session later in the month. To, to start setting up, you know, a tone and a direction as to where we can go. One of the biggest challenges right now is, is just the uncertainty. You know, I think we'll start to have a little bit of clarity in a month, I hope, as to where things are going, though that's not going to end anything. It's the beginning of the next chapter. So I think there was an announcement by Washington that more stimulus, you know, more COVID relief money is dead right now. So we have what we have. In fact, I just filled out a, a query from the school committee chair today about some other improvements they might want to make. So we're exploring those. So we're trying to resource the money that we have as, as best as possible and stretch it as far as possible to make sure we get the best bang for our buck in the grant. And Dawn is tracking monthly and putting money into, working to get reimbursements from FEMA so we can stretch the dollars as far as we can. So. But in some, they basically say, hey, you know, we're doing good stuff. Continue to build capital, continue to build maintenance. Continue to pay attention to the long-term things like OPEB and the reserve funds. At the same time, COVID crisis has had a real impact on the economy and we have to, we have to watch it closely.
Right. So just in, in terms of the select board budget message, the draft that I shared with you literally right before the meeting. So I don't expect that anybody had read it, but I incorporated pretty much everything in that the advisory committee recommended into a similar format to what we've used in the past, although I, I retweaked it a little bit. And under the operational budget and the capital budget, I put in some of the, the pieces that we've identified as our priorities. So for example, under operational priorities, I mean, other than the status quo, if you will, or sustaining the programs that we have, which is the commitment that this budget document makes, assuming we approve it, is to, you know, doing what we can within the budget to support and enhance the programs of Safe Harbor. Because I think that has clearly become a priority for all of us. And also streamlining and establishing a communications plan, which we've made great strides on this year, just to having a PR person and then, but we all know there's still a long way to go. And operational needs within the master and harbor plans. And then similarly, under capital, calling out very specific priorities that we know of or general priorities that we haven't identified yet with respect to the priorities of the master plan. So. So what I would like to suggest, obviously ask if anybody has any questions now, great. But just review this, review this in the context of the advisory recommendations. Think about things that either make sense or don't make sense or might be missing. And then we'll have a more fulsome conversation about this document later in the month. The other thing is collective bargaining. This is a year where we're, where Chris and team are going to be negotiating all of the, all of the union contracts as well as, you know, whatever annual raises for non-union employees. So we're going to have input on that after the advisory committee gets up to speed just in general about how the whole process will play out. And we'll have an executive session on that in a few weeks as well. Jack?
Yeah, that advisory letter was extraordinarily, not only well-written, but it raised some very important things. And it's just a example of how small towns can really govern themselves, looking to their citizens. I would like to see that comment put on a town website. I think everybody in town who is so inclined would benefit greatly from, from reading it. It's, I was very impressed by it and I'd like to thank the advisory committee for their work.
Great. Thank you. Absolutely. Maybe as part of Chris, just almost building a portfolio of the budget discussions and documents as they morph their way into the ultimate budget presentation that we'll get whenever in early fall, early winter, because we, that's where we, you know, that's our launching pad for the, for the winter, spring meetings and obviously annual town meeting. Any other questions? The, you know, the, the reserve fund 1% is aspirational. I, I wrote it that way in our, in the budget document. So I'm flagging that just to pay attention to flagging, obviously, collective bargaining discussions. And then again, the priorities that we have both operationally and in terms of capital. Everybody good? Great. Thanks. And you know, Chris, I think Dawn usually comes at the end of the month. The 20th would be our monthly budget update. And we could, we could discuss this further on that date, but I'm also thinking, and we can talk about this later in the meeting tonight, that, that meeting is going to be pretty heavy because we also have a hearing, a liquor license hearing. So we may need to consider having another kind of regular select board meeting this month. That make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, the 27th is open. So you can all think over the next half hour, see if that's okay with your schedules.
All right, let's talk about that when we get to select board comments.
So Donna's been watching us tonight, but he's ready to jump in next, next time. So.
Well, guess what? Right on target with the agenda at 8:15 is an update on our select board goal number one, which is the big one that is all encompassing, but probably more important than anything. Because if we don't do this stuff right, you know, the cards start, the cookie starts to crumble. So I assume Miriam's going to walk us through this and welcome.
I'm going to, I'm going to start and then Mary chunk of it. So what I will do first, if I, I will show the slide that shows the seven components of community health. As we've defined them this year, as you've defined this year. And we had added one, if you recall, public health, which we'll talk about more because we have Pam Fahey here tonight to talk about that. Affordable housing, I think you've touched on already. Economic fatality, I've already touched on with, with the working group. A response to addiction, mental health and substance abuse. Nicole Velashy is here to talk more about that and what we're doing with Safe Harbor Plus. Community engagement is something that we all need to continue to talk about. That's something the board has kind of taken on as a, as a big task of its own. And we're obviously here to support that. Miriam's here to talk about inclusion and diversity. And I'll talk a little bit more about open and accessible government in terms of communications and what we've been doing. So if that works as an order.
Sounds great.
We'll have, are you ready to jump in there, Pam? I actually have your, do you want to show your video? I have your PowerPoint ready if you want me to run it for you.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Chris, that'd be great.
And, and I just want to let everybody know, we didn't have our public emergency management team start our meeting off for the first time in a long time. More because things, you know, there's not a whole lot new to report, but they're still very active and engaged, especially with the schools opening and other, other topics, which I think Pam will touch on in this segment.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot going on. COVID never stops.
Yeah.
But, but I am going to talk about the class of public health goals that are outside of COVID. So if you wouldn't mind going to the first slide, Chris. So we actually have our short-term goal, which I'm going to discuss, and then we have a series of three longer-term goals. So this year, the short-term goal is to increase vaccination rates, which is looking to be somewhat of a problem because of COVID, because a lot of people have kind of let some vaccinations lapse because of the fear of going into hospital settings. So the Board of Health is going to increase the number of flu shot doses that we provide to the public. Last season, 600 doses were purchased, 150 doses for seniors and 450 standard doses. Of that, 150 were returned. So this year, 450 were ordered, you know, which is how many were given last year. But we've also got another 250 on back order for a total of 700 doses. So we really think we could give, or we being really Mary Goodwin, to give the 700 doses, because right now there's three clinics scheduled. The first one's completely, completely filled up. The second one is almost filled up. And then the third one has some spaces. The third one will be the actual indoor one in November. The first two are drive-throughs in October. So we are going to promote a campaign to increase awareness, keeping up with immunity. We're going to post on the new blog that's been established by the, the PR firm that we've recently contracted with. And we'll emphasize the importance of getting back all your vaccinations, not just the flu vaccination. So to see how we've done, you know, in terms of number wise, at the end of the like flu season, say like in June or something, we'll be able to check with CVS, Walgreens and Stop and Shop pharmacies, because they actually keep records of the number of vaccines that they give out. And, you know, hopefully we'll see an increase in the total number of vaccinations.
Just a quick question on that, Pam. Do they keep, they keep track of where the people live? So, you know?
Well, there is, there is some, a little bit of mixing of, you know, maybe Hall in one end of the town and Citewood down the other end of town. And they don't break it out by type of vaccines. Like they don't break out flu versus other vaccinations. But I think overall, if we can look at it like big numbers, like I think, you know, they give out several thousand. So, you know, if there's an overall increase.
Right, got it.
Should be pretty significant, I think.
Okay. And then the blog that you have, is that, is that up and running and where can people find that?
That is up and running and it is on the town website. And I think it's replaced the previous COVID page we had. I think if you click on that other, the previous button, it will take you to the new blog now.
I'll, I'll show a link to that later, Diane, if you want.
All right, that would be great. And so then the final thing is, we are in preparations already for, hopefully we'll get a vaccine, maybe like in the wintertime. So we've been, you know, having planning meetings. We've had training exercises and how to do it in the schools and stuff. And so hopefully we'll be ready when it comes down the pike. And the CDC will be looking to them for actually how to prioritize it, because it probably won't be enough initially for everybody. So the CDC will be the ones that will tell us, you know, I think it'll be like safety people first, you know, like police and fire. And then obviously the medical community, and then it will probably be elderly people. And so anyway, we won't be the ones making up the rules. We'll get that from the CDC. Third question?
Pam, quick question. Do we have a very low temperature refrigerator, freezer rather? Because it looks like two of the vaccines will be requiring very cold temperatures for the cold chain.
I agree. And so Mary just received her freezer today. We got a brand new freezer, refrigerator freezer. So we're good to go.
Good.
Well, yeah, hop back. Thanks, Chris. So that's, that's our short-term goal for 2020. So we have longer-term public health goals. And so those are going to be more of like two to three-year public education campaigns to increase awareness, prevention of vector-borne illnesses and skin cancer. Next slide. So skin cancer is actually an issue in Cohasset. Each year, the Massachusetts State Cancer Registry puts out reports. Each year, the Massachusetts State Cancer Registry puts out reports, and each town gets their own report. And it describes the incident rates for 23 types of cancer plus an overall cancer rate, and it's broken down between men and women. So of all those different cancer types, the one high incidence rate greater than expected is skin cancer in women. So for example, for a town the size of Cohasset, it would be expected that there'd be five cancer cases a year of melanoma. But there are 15 cases per year, so it's three times higher than would be expected. So we're going to focus on sun awareness. We're going to work in collaboration with the Children's Melanoma Foundation and the South Shore Skin Cancer Center. So at the, the town health and rec fair each year, the people from the children's melanoma prevention, they'll have a setup where they have kind of like a mirror, where you can look into it and see the, some maybe some damage to your skin and the beginnings of maybe, you know, damage you need to be careful of. There's also where you can like put lotion on your face and then it shows like where you've missed spots and stuff. And then we go to Sandy Beach each summer, and we have Dr. Laura Butler from the South Shore Skin Cancer. She's there to look at anybody that walks by and, and, you know, kind of do a brief look at their skin and just let them know where there may be some spots or areas that look a little concerning. Like, we didn't do it this year because of COVID. But last year, we're like, she was checking out all the lifeguards, they were letting, you know, let them look at their skin. And so it's been really helpful, and we're definitely going to continue to do that more. And we'll have product giveaways at Farmer's Market. Farmer's Market, we didn't do anything this year because 2020 is all food. But hopefully next year, we'll be at the Farmer's Market, make our presence felt there. Again, Health and Rec Fair, Sandy Beach will distribute a free little sample bottles of sunscreen. And we're hoping to post some more on social media. We've been talking about like the town getting Instagram accounts. And I was just talking to Jen Orm a little bit more about that today. And we definitely think that's a good, good idea. We're going to push forward with that. And as the Health Department, we'll make sure we're regular contributors to that. Next slide. So, you know, tick-related illnesses are an increase in Massachusetts and really in the Northeast in particular. It's due to a combination of residential development and warmer climate. It's only going to keep getting worse. So, you know, nowadays, almost everybody knows somebody who's had Lyme disease who has it or has had it. So it's a really important public health issue to raise awareness about. So we're going to try using available tools such as Quest at 143 TV to kind of put out PSAs. Where again, we're going to use that blog that we have, the PR firm set up. We'll use social media, like our Instagram account and Facebook. We're going to develop 100 posters. We just had to put a number on something, we were saying 100 posters. Distribute free educational materials at park entrances. I think that's like a really key place, like Wheelwright Park, you know, when you walk in, there'll be like one of those little boxes, you could take one, you know, what does a tick look like? How do you remove it, that type of thing? And we're going to have one speaker each year. We've had Blake Genius in the past. He's a Plymouth County entomologist. He's excellent. He gives a really good presentation. It's not just educational, it's really entertaining. He's a great speaker. We haven't had great attendance when we have had him. So I think we need to brainstorm and maybe get him into like a school assembly or something. His presentation is really great for kids. So we're going to work a little harder to push Blake on people, I think. Last slide. And then mosquito-borne illness is another really big issue. You know, mosquitoes spread rare, but often deadly, triple E as well as West Nile virus. So we're currently in year two of a three-year high-risk cycle for triple E. I think we lucked out this year because, well, sadly, because we're in a really severe drought, but I think the drought really helped knock down the mosquitoes. So we're going to continue to have Plymouth County Mosquito Control provide lava siding and catch basins and storm drains to knock out the lava. And in terms of targeting the adult mosquitoes, this year, for the first time, I had them do like a routine spraying every Friday. They went to eight targeted areas like the ball fields and some parks in the town hall area. So we did that throughout the whole high-risk season. And then we'll also continue to use social media posting as well about, you know, how to protect yourself from mosquitoes. So those are the big, big things. Again, a combo of short-term and long-term and a lot of public education.
It's, Pam, is the PR firm helping also with kind of understanding how to use some of the social media in terms of what, what messaging works? Are they pretty much working on more long-form content?
Um, to this point, we haven't used them for that, but that's a really great point. I mean, again, you know, I've been so crazy with the COVID thing, but at some point it'll settle down. And I think, yeah, that would be great. I could definitely use some lessons from them.
Yeah, we, you know, in my business, we, we just, in while we've laid people off, we've actually hired somebody to really help us hone in and build schedules via platform and what works better on Instagram and Facebook and blogs and that kind of thing. So it might be worth seeing if that's something they have expertise in.
Definitely, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Carrie?
Yeah, a lot of our younger residents are on Instagram more than Facebook. Facebook tends to skew a little bit older now, so I love that idea of a town Instagram page, especially when it comes to issues like this. And I especially really love tackling the sunscreen, sun damage issue, Pam. I think that's really important. I think we're not talking about that enough as a community. And I especially think we should figure out how to target young people with that as well, to try to set those good habits. But it's, it's definitely something I'm really happy to hear you talk about. And I can't wait to help you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anybody else or move along? Thanks so much, Pam. Good work.
All right, thank you.
We have next with us tonight, Nicole Balashe from Safe Harbor. So she has a presentation, which, do you want to show, Nicole, or you want me to do it?
If you have it up, that would be great.
I have it.
I, I hope you're going to tell us how your ground cafe at the beach went last Friday.
Oh, yes, I, I have some pictures to share.
Excellent.
Here we go.
I'm praying my dog does not start to cry behind. All right, so I am the, I really just kind of taken the chair position of the substance use addiction and mental health piece of the community health goal. But everyone who's been working on this, you can see their logos here. This is really, to have a community health goal, you have to have the community behind it. So there's a lot of initiatives that are taking place cross-department, cross-organization. So next slide, please. So our target goals, really to decrease underage substance use, and that's all substances, with the overall goal of reducing adulthood addiction. And then also decreasing stress and mental health issues amongst the youth and adults. And again, this would, would in turn reduce substance use as a coping skill. So these are our targets, but it really encompasses prevention and treatment for both substance use and mental health. Next slide. So pre-COVID and, and post-COVID, we have continued efforts, and I won't read them all off for you here, but just a few that I wanted to highlight. We have the prescription kiosk at Cohasset Police Department, and that's 24/7. And that is for anyone who has prescription that they didn't use all of, or if it has expired. Just for the community to know that that is a resource that is, again, there 24/7. And also the Interface Referral Service. I don't know if this gets enough publicity. Cohasset is extremely fortunate to have this as a resource. It's free to every single resident in Cohasset. It's, it's from nine to five, Monday through Friday, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a resource to the residents for anyone who is struggling with mental health, whether it's themselves or a loved one. They can call this number and all the information is found on Safe Harbor. And also on, if you just Google the Interface Referral Service, the number pops up. But they do all of the work for you, because in that situation, it's already super overwhelming and draining. The last thing you want to do is research who takes your insurance and who's available, who doesn't have a waitlist, et cetera. So Interface Referral Service is a huge piece. And I can't thank the town and the schools enough for funding that service. It's just not utilized as much as it should be. So anyone watching, I just want to make sure that they know that that is a resource.
Quick question. Referral Service, is that the William James College? Okay, good. Yeah, that was supported with both of our Senator and Representatives for, gosh, three or four years in a row in the past three or four years. Yeah, that's a tremendous service.
It is, it really is. And during COVID, as we all know, there were, we've seen an uptick in mental health issues, and it's only projected to go up as we kind of go into our new normal and into the winter. So we really tried to push, and I can't thank Diane and Chris Senior and all the other town leaders that participated in the PSA that we recorded during COVID, just to really get the information out there to let the community know that it is there. And then one other one, the mental health education piece. This again, mental health is an underlying issue to substance use. So the schools have implemented the free mental health modules that Safe Harbor sponsored into their freshman wellness curriculum. And I just got an email today that they just saw an influx from Cohasset accessing those modules. So that's awesome to hear. But all these are efforts that continue to be of service. Next slide. So in post-COVID, we, of course, are focusing on the entire community, but with an additional youth focus, again, because of the mental health and substances that we've seen. So one of those includes the teen center. I know that this has been a topic of conversation. And again, I am just cheering this initiative, but it is all the departments that you see on the Cohasset survey. It's a town-wide initiative. Right now, we have 304 responses of the 500. So what we need to move forward before we take any proceeding steps would be Cohasset Middle School. John Mills is, he's already pledged to email it out to all the students, grade six through eight, through their Aspen email, and then reiterated through morning announcements. And then Youth Ambassadors, we brought it to their attention last week to complete the survey and also spread to their friends. And we're going to reiterate it again this Thursday and then ask that they bring it to their parents as well. And then we need you. So when I say you, not just specifically talking to the select board members, but also any community members that are watching and tuning in. We really just need the community that, the, we need the voice of the community, because this really is what you want to see in your town. We need your voice to be heard. And when we say you, it's you and your children. And then again, for everyone who is in Cohasset to share it on their social platform. So to complete the survey, it takes one minute, if that, and then share it. If I shared in Cohasset 143, I'm not a resident of Cohasset, so it kind of gets blown over. So if you are a resident to share on Facebook and your personal Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, the more that people see it, the more we can get to the 500, 500 responses and then move forward based on the feedback that we get. And then it is currently on the main page of the town of Cohasset.
Nicole, quick question, just in terms, I'm glad that the middle school's pushing it out. Is, I took it like when it was first available, like in early March. But remind me, do we capture whether the respondent is a student or an adult? Do we ask for their age?
Yep, we do ask for the age, yeah. So right now, the majority is age 30 to 60.
Okay, great. So we really do need a little bit of the kids to weigh in, because they're going to put it, you know, and if we got 60 or 90 kids to weigh in, even if we're short of the 500, like that's, that's the population we want to listen to.
Exactly.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Nicole?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Jack Creighton. I think it's important for everybody to know the good work that you're doing on actually getting our teen center and the meeting that, that you had with myself and Cory to, and the unanimous support of the select board for having a teen center. And I think it's important for people to know that the town is taking a leading role in moving this. And we are so grateful for the work that you and Safe Harbor does in guiding us along the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. And so the next slide will show what we're doing in the meantime. So until we get all those responses, we are trying to provide services to the town of Cohasset. So we have our Cohasset Virtual Youth Center, which will be live on the main page of the town of Cohasset starting Thursday. And this is just going to be a central location of all the programs that are virtual and a few, very few that are in person. Just a central location for everyone to navigate. So if you go to the next slide, there's a screenshot of what it will look like once you press the button into the youth center. And we have tiles here, and all of these programs are from the library, rec, Safe Harbor, and Elder Affairs. Elder Affairs does, they're amazing and do a lot of intergenerational programs. So these will be updated and monitored by us, but Jen Orm really did, did all this work. She is a wizard. And then all of our, our personal department websites will also be here. But again, it's just one central location, because we are, even though we're a small town, we have various departments and there's 5 million ways to find what's going on. So this will be one central way for the town to figure out what programs are available for the youth.
That's fantastic, the idea of the virtual teen center. I love that.
Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah.
So again, that'll be Thursday. And then next slide. And we also are still providing the Youth Ambassador Program. We had a very overwhelming response. We honestly weren't expecting it. We were projecting around 25 students, and we ended up having 50 registered students. And these, the majority is from Central, Central Cohasset Public Schools. And then we have a few from South Shore Voke, BC High, and Derby Academy. And this is a mixture between grade six through 12. And this group primarily wants to focus on advocacy, mental health, and substance education this year. So we're excited about that. They meet every Thursday, 4:30 to 6:00. And they're facilitated at when, if either myself or Chris Collarin are in a meeting, we are technical assistants, our camera is off, and we're just there if they need help with Zoom. So the meetings are completely facilitated by four leaders who are grades 11 and 12, and then two leaders in training. So they're kind of, the leaders are mentoring two freshmen and sophomores. And then they had a mandatory training that really kicked off this year that I just needed to speak to, because it was amazing. It was three hours, 40 of the 50 students were able to attend, again, due to the maximum that we had with our training contract. But it focused on welcoming all walks of life, accepting everyone, whether it's a visible or invisible difference. And then, of course, leadership and presentation skills. And I just thought that this spoke volumes. These are the, the youth, this is our future generation. And to have this type of mentality start from the bottom up is only going to benefit the entire community. So we were super excited and got great feedback from that training. Next slide. As Diane mentioned, we had our pop-up ground-level cafe in the time of COVID. We cannot, we typically ground-level cafe, which is an alternative Friday night activity, takes place at the rec center downtown. It's too small to have the amount of students that typically attend. On average, there's about 40 students. So we tried to get creative and had our first pop-up event at Sandy Beach Associate, at Sandy Beach. Thank you to Sandy Beach Association. We're so grateful. And we had 22 students attend. Thank you to Sandy Beach Association. We're so grateful. And we had 22 students attend and they were all phenomenal, socially distant, wore their masks, performed some great music and just hung out. And I think they were just really excited to be around one another, even though it was six feet apart. And then we had known us there providing treats. It was a little chilly, but we had a rainbow and, and it was great. It was all worth the, the cold fingers. And then next slide. So our big to do is our community-wide pumpkin contest. With this whole goal of community health, our goal here is to collaborate with various sectors of the community to provide an alternative to Halloween. The typical trick-or-treating is obviously going to be limited. So this will be an alternative activity that's healthy and also safe during a high-risk time. And when I say high-risk time, that means COVID, but also Halloween is a high-risk time for underage substance use, primarily alcohol here in Cohasset. Then the other goal is to boost the mental health, giving and providing something that is enjoyable for all to look forward to, parents and children. Next slide. So like I said, this is a goal, the, the real goal is to collaborate across the town, if not just Safe Harbor putting this on. We have a lot of partners that are, are key players. So the ASP, Youth Ambassadors, the Chamber of Commerce, Social Service League, Recreation. Next slide will show a little more. So what is the community-wide pumpkin contest? This will be basically the community can sign up, will have 300 pumpkins, and the first 300 to sign up gets a free pumpkin. And they can pick it up at ASP, that Wheelwright Park, their pumpkin patch on October 15th and 16th. And then the drop-off date will be October 23rd in the Commons. And everyone who participates gets a goodie bag upon drop-off of their pumpkin. And there will be some goodies and then also some information from Safe Harbor just about healthy alternatives and the nine yards there. And then community judging. So this is where the business sector comes into play. All the pumpkins that are entered would be displayed in the business window fronts in Cohasset Village. And the community will be the judges. We have the Youth Ambassadors developing QR codes. So that will be contactless and you can just go around and, and vote that way. And then the winners, there will be with these age groups that you see here, three different categories within each age group. And the winner, the three winners of each age group would get a gift card to the local businesses. We're trying to give back to our community that has been affected by COVID. So we had a great donor, Social Service League donated a, a good amount of money for us to purchase those gift cards. So it's really tying in the business community, it's tying in the adults, the children. And then our other organizations like ASP, Rec, helping out, stuffing goodie bags, et cetera.
That's practically perfect, to be honest. That's really terrific. What about the pumpkins from ASP?
Am I frozen or did you?
Did I freeze?
Yeah.
Sorry. And I'm not on Wi-Fi. Did you, do you have financial support and need financial support for the, the, the pumpkins from ASP?
So we, yes, we are still looking for a little, a few more donors for the pumpkins themselves. We, Christine Murphy and Phil were able to donate $500 to go towards pumpkins, but they are expensive. So we are looking for donors and also volunteers because there's going to be a lot of manual labor, putting pumpkins into the windows and also stuffing goodie bags and, and going to buy the supplies and whatnot. So volunteers and donors are needed for sure.
Is that something you can put like a press release out so that we can push that out and help you collect money and people?
Absolutely. And I think there are one or two last slides. And then that should be my wrap-up. And then lastly, we have some virtual education for the community. On October 28th, these are all on Zoom. They're free, 5:00 PM, and then November 4th, which I know is the day after election. But there will be a virtual education piece on that next day at 5:00 PM as well. So this is, we're teaming up with health imperatives. And the first one will be on relationships and substances, kind of how they're intertwined. And then social media boundaries, this goes over online safety. And these are for adults and for adults with children. And if you don't have children, that is completely fine as well. They're, they're really relevant to the community at large. So if you are interested, there is limited capacity. So please register. All of this can be found at safeharborcohasset.org. And the last slide. And then additional resources. When we are talking about mental health and substance use there, I, I do want to just bring up that we do have a parent advisor through the town of Cohasset who is anonymous. Again, that information can be found at Safe Harbor Cohasset. And also going through the Recovery, Recovery Coach Academy, if I'm not mistaken. So that will be another resource that we're, we're trying to get provided to the Cohasset residents. And then lastly, the whole reason for these virtual education pieces and also the, the whole pumpkin contest as a whole, youth who are connected to their community are I was thinking Chris, the very last slide, are at a decreased risk for substance use, mental health, and violence in their adulthood. So that's really why we're pushing for this community-wide feeling and trying to get everyone connected. Youth again, as our target. And then these are just where you can find us. Subscribe to our newsletter and follow us on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter.
Thank you so much, Nicole. A quick question, it just came to my mind. Is, you know, with, with all of your students willing to take leadership roles as the ambassadors, you know, maybe be thinking about whether there's something in the kind of municipal management side of things that they could get involved and engaged with. And, you know, I'm thinking like, maybe we could create a youth position on Cohasset 143 programming, you know, position, for example, or maybe, you know, they want to take a leadership role and, and be on the cultural council or something that, that actually might interest them or, or, or interest, you know, or address their interests in getting involved in the community at, you know, at, at our, at our level. And I mean that just in, in terms of the conversations we're having. So, you know, if there's any sort of leaders that you can funnel toward us, I, we would be, I think, happy to make some accommodations to get them engaged. And, you know, I know one kid in, in college a few years ago said, I'm so excited. I love old buildings. I love Cohasset. And I said, good, you're going to be on the Town Hall Building Committee. And he's been on it for about four or five years. And I'm sure there's a lot of others too that could be channeled into a role like that.
Yeah, that, that would actually be phenomenal. And if there are, if you have a list of committees that come to mind, that'd be helpful as well because we do have, we have a very good group. And like I said, we were not expecting the, the influx, a lot of high schoolers. So we have a lot of leaders to follow your way. Just let me know where I can put them.
Right. Technically, you know, you have to be 18 and a registered voter, but that doesn't preclude somebody from being added as a liaison role or something, you know, unofficial. So, great, thank you.
Thank you, Cory, but you're muted. Yeah, Nicole, I just, I'm just, I'm so excited about the Youth Ambassador's program. And we talked about this offline, but one thing I'd like to suggest and bring to the board is maybe the idea of publicly recognizing these, these kids. I mean, this is, you know, how we get to, to kids is through other kids, through other youth. I mean, this is bottom up. That's how you get these messages out. And having, I mean, 50 students in Cohasset, just think about the reach. And I want to, you know, I'm excited to see if this program can continue to grow. We keep investing in it. And part of that is us, I think, as a Select Board, publicly recognizing the role these, these, these students, these youths play. So I'd love to have that idea. I also want to say thank you again to Christine Murphy. And I think you said Phil, it's Phil here, I'm guessing, for their donation for the pumpkins. That's super kind. So thank you both very much for that.
Great, Carrie.
There maybe could be a way that we could channel some of their talents to Nicole into helping with our new town's social media accounts. Some type of like health, public service announcements or something. So I would love to chat with you about that more because I think that we could use their talent for sure. Also, did you give details about the community judging for the pumpkins?
No, I did not. So our, so there's a lot of ongoing pieces as this is kind of all coming together in this week.
That's fine too, if you don't know all the details yet.
The vision is that with these QR codes, they'll all be kind of sectioned off by ages within the businesses. And then community members can just go, they'll be numbered. So with the QR code will bring you to the page. And then you say, I like pumpkin 44 and 126.
Hi. I love the QR code. That's so high tech.
That was a thing and that you're able to do that. I brought it to the Youth Ambassadors on Thursday and they were like, oh yeah, we'll just create a QR code. Yes.
I just want to post on social media and help plug it for you. So let us know when you know that.
Thank you. Yes. It should be live tomorrow or Thursday at the latest. And to Cory's point, I did mention to the leaders about some type of recognition for their work. So if that does occur, they are very excited.
We're going to need a whole new Zoom platform for that.
Just the six leaders.
Yeah, okay. So thank you very much, Nicole.
Okay, so those are two really big ones. And I want to thank Pam and Nicole a lot. They're very different, but they're really, really important. And I think it shows the depth and breadth of the, the talent that we have, both on staff and in volunteers, together to make this stuff come, come together for the town. I want to pivot to one that's new, not that the other ones aren't, but which is inclusivity, inclusion and diversity. And, you know, this is something that's not just an employee and staff-driven one. This is obviously one that all of you are driving to. So Miriam's going to give us an update as to where we are on the staff side and where we're looking to go. There's still a lot of conversations about this. It's not, it's, it's something we have to do the right way. And I know that Miriam's trying to get us on the right page on this. So I will turn this over to Mary.
Thanks, Chris. So to start with, some of the things that we've always done, we will continue to do, which is, you know, to search for diversity when we are hiring as an employer. You know, Cohasset being a seaside town, not easy to get to, is a little challenging to bring in folks without long, long commutes. And, but we continue to do that. We continue to work with employees who have situations that make them uncomfortable. And it's not typically a racial issue, but we have diversity in generations, in gender, in sexual orientation. We have a number of different ways in which our employees are diverse. And we continue to work with them. A lot of times that is done in a very confidential way, but it, it's a big part of what we do. Chris, do you have the slide that I sent you about some of the things that we'd like to add to what we normally do?
If not, he's pulling that up, Miriam. Do, do, is there any required like modules? And, and I know we, we talked about the word training versus education, but I know on the, on the Maya Board, we've discussed it. And, and just in my professional life, you know, there's required, you know, modules of implicit bias or sexual orientation, you know, implicit bias of both and that kind of stuff that was required of us on an annual basis to go through those trainings.
What is required by law is annual anti-discrimination and anti- or sexual harassment policy training. And we do most of that online and virtually. And Chris, if you can't find it, I will pull it up. You have it? Okay, great. Next page. Great. So adding to, you know, our normal operations in support of inclusion and diversity, we took a look at how we can approach this in a broader sense. And so we've really broken it down to three different streams, if you will. Adding to the employee-oriented programs, we would include unconscious bias or implicit bias training. It's not something that we typically have done in the past. We started, actually, I spent most of Monday with one of our departments doing some communication-style training. You know, it's not the diversity that we think about, but we've had people who are having hard times understanding each other because they come from very different perspectives. So we did some of that and we will continue to do that with our employee group. And then of course, the annual required anti-discrimination and sexual harassment training. Then the second stream of activity we'd like to do is add some annual anti-discrimination, sexual harassment training for boards and committees. What I'd like to do, and I know at least Duxbury has done it, is to do it live, to video it. And the, and in the COVID world, live means a very small group. So instead of doing it 10 times, we would do it with one group and then make it available virtually. And unconscious bias training can be done virtually, I believe. I mean, all of these, I think, are much richer if you can do them in person. But with COVID, as well as everyone's schedule, it becomes very, very challenging to do things in person. So.
I, I, I think the board and committee-oriented programs should include communication-style training. I know, I'd love that for some of my public phone calls on the weekends.
And, and certainly we could do that. We can certainly do that. And then the third stream would be programs offered to the public. And we've had some conversations with the library and some conversations with Willcut Commons already as to developing programs. And I don't have any that I can share with you today. But I've asked them to look at, as they develop their programs for the remainder of the year, can we have a book club? Can we have an author? Can we have so, you know, training for our older generation who may have some some need for understanding some of the terminology and some of the impacts of behavior. So they are both working on coming together to develop programs for the public that will be supporting inclusion and diversity. So that's what we're thinking for this year.
Just a comment, suggestion. I actually met with a few colleagues who've become friends of mine in Norwell, who are select women in, in Norwell, on the Norwell Board. And they, they're obviously struggling with some of these same issues as we all are in terms of how to, how to open up community-wide conversations on these relatively sensitive, but very, very important topics. And, you know, they were talking about how they have, they have a diversity committee that's appointed by the Select Board and how the committee never meets. And they can't get a quorum. And, 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 and I said, well, what if you took that and made that, you know, just not the town's committee, but actually have it come from, from the community? And, you know, maybe that would be, and we have a diversity committee in Cohasset. And I think being kind of out of the town structure for public meetings makes things a little more organic and helps things flourish a little quicker. But one thing that Cohasset did a number of years ago, and it didn't specifically address diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, but it was a community reads. And it was a really great opportunity for the community in general at all levels, the schools. So you pick whatever the So you pick whatever the topic is, and let's say it's whales, just, you know, W H A L E S, right? So the kindergarten through second grade have a book on whales and then the third through six and so on and so on. And then they're, the adults read Moby Dick or whatever it is. And, and it was very, it was just a great community event and everybody got invested in it. And, you know, we would have an author talk and that kind of thing. And maybe this particular subject is something that we, you know, the library could develop a, a community read and especially now where people are so isolated. Having a book, having a discussion group online, but something that's, a topic that's all throughout the community, I think, might be just something, something really rallying around now.
Yes.
I, I know. I, I see over my shoulder.
Pretty. Your kitty's pretty. So I, you know, I will certainly share that with the library because I think they could spearhead it most effectively.
Absolutely.
And I think that's a wonderful idea.
And it's a suggestion, right? But maybe to lead to something even better. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Miriam, there are a lot of other towns in Mass whose libraries have been doing similar things. Tell our library, I think it's a great springboard to start these conversations. And we need to be having them in our community. And I think there really is a desire to do that. So I do love the library angle here.
Okay, we're good. Thank you, Miriam. Any last minute question? Any last questions for Miriam? Now I have my dog whining. All right. Great. Miriam, thank you so much. You're welcome.
So let me pivot. Again, we've had some really good conversations here to accessibility of information and communication. So as we've, we've, over the last few years, we've kind of, we've made major strides. That said, we still need to continue to make them. One of the things we need to do, and we've been talking internally and we're going to take ownership of that here in our office here. And we're going to have a staff member, Justine, will take on the ability to start posting our meetings regularly. All the, the select board and school committee regularly posting any mic. There's all these others that we're recording. We need to get them up and get them more accessible. So Justine is going to take responsibility for that. We've already been talking IT. So we have a YouTube page, we have a 10 YouTube page, and we're going to start getting this up more regularly. So she's working on some of the tactics of that. And it's a lot of just, some of it's just processing. We have some software that allows you to convert the Zoom to a YouTube format. And so we're good to go. And Corey sent me something too. So I think, I think we're, you know, we're on the path. Part of the challenge here is these are things that we never did before. We never had to do them before. So now it's just a finer, we now have a new task, got to find time for somebody to do it. So Justine's going to take on more of a social media role in the office. It's just, it's just really important to have it here, to have someone who knows it more. I mean, I don't, I don't go to Facebook much, to be honest. I have friends who laugh at me for that, but I just, I just, I look at Twitter more than I do other things. The, that said, so let me, let me show you some of the things, one of the, one of the things that we've done now. We don't need to be, you know, some communities that are much larger than us have actually created communications departments. You know, governments are kind of laggards, laggards on a lot of things. HR, right? Seven years ago, there was nothing here. Now we actually have a functional department. We're doing some great stuff. We didn't really have IT here. We have that. Other communities have had now have full-time communications people. I don't know that we're quite big enough for that. Maybe at some point if we do something generally with schools and have some kind of communications position, something to talk about. That said, what we've done is we've brought in a communications firm that's done a lot of work for us. And quite frankly, it's, it's a monthly fee. It's not that expensive. And there's no OPEP costs. They don't take sick days. They, they on call all weekend. We get an update every, every Friday. There's always someone on call if we need them for something. And to talk about that health bug, it's the first thing we've been able to do. So let me show you. So this is the front of the town's webpage, right? You see? And up on, we have this emergency alert.
Oh, the COVID blog.
If you click on that now, this is where you go. You go to the nice clean town across just as COVID-19 site. And up on top here is all the information that was there before. So you can see here, this is the weekly press release we put out. So you can see what the, you know, what the numbers are, what's going on. And here's, you know, other information that, that is curated. Okay. And it's, and it's back on what's best two-on-one, you know, and this will link you right to the best two-on-one website. So.
Chris, and this is the same firm that's doing the, that's helping with the video on elections?
Yes, yes. And so in fact, one of the things they're doing, and we'll get back to that. The, one of the things they're doing is videos as well. So all of you, I think we showed you the video. So that's again, this is the coast. You can click it on from here and there you go. You can click on it from here. It'll bring you there. And if you go from here, still have this page here, right? And there's the survey we're talking about for, click on here. You have to do a, we can't directly link to it. So you just click right here. You go to the page. So the, and again, it's a great, they're, they're maintaining it for us. We're pushing in information. We can do it. I just, it's cleaner. The next phase of this will be to do a news blog just like this. So we're working with them on establishing that format. So every week they take the five things update I do and other information they get and they'll do updates like the, over the weekend, you know, we had that unfortunate OUI accident at Forest Staff, right? So Bill put the information together. He sent it over. They pulled it together. They sent it out. And there were stories in the Globe and all, and the community was updated, right? The information was right there as to what happened. We were, and again, on a more regular routine, you know, we've done, just have been some stories about the special police officers and all of that. You know, what, what's the safe harbor vigil is all kinds of things we have to do. In terms of videos, they also, again, we pay a little extra for those. They did the how to get to town hall video, which is still posted. You can watch. And they shot two of them for us last week. One on flu shots and getting the flu and why it's important, how to do it. And when that, when the clinics are coming up. And then one on elections. So that'll, those will both be posted. I said, I hope later in the week. And we can continue to do this. I, Bill's working on one, Bill Quigley with the police department, kind of like an intro video. And he's paying for that of some gift funds he's been given. So that's going to be like a little, I think, two, three minute, like a little video about the class of police on the other webpage. We may try to do more of those. I, you know, Lauren, Lauren actually did one, Lauren, Linda, our town planner on just how to navigate, how to pass file plans. She did that. And that's actually up and available. I think we'd like to do more of those. And, you know, we, again, whenever we can partner with 143 as resources are, we'd love to. At the same time, they have their own mission and they have a lot to do. So if, you know, these folks came down and they were in and out of here in less than an hour and they were able to, you know, do both of those videos. And they actually got some, some background because of that. They had to, there was an accident that day too, unfortunately. Nobody got hurt. So they got some, some B-roll for the, for the police video. So they, it's a great resource. I mean, the, the local offices in Braintree, so they're kind of right around the corner from us. And they have staff that are, that are on call. So, you know, the, their staff has, has worked in TV and local media. They're easy to work with. And again, there, there's no health benefits. They're not taking sick time. And we have no OPEP liability. So, and again, it's pretty inexpensive. Right now we're paying a little less than $1,500 a month. And because it's all COVID related, we're paying for it that way. But I think it's something that's worth building into the budget going forward. I do really allowed us to do more and will continue to allow us to do more, including stuff on Instagram page. I think they're going to be helpful with us on all those fronts. But it's, it's a resource that has made our lives a lot easier in communicating, I think, and it will continue to help us.
Chris, do you think some of the, I'm thinking specifically about the water department, whether they could utilize the, the PR firm to help them just with some of their messaging. I spoke with Leonora and, you know, there was somebody just on Facebook one day writes, why are our water bills so high? And then it just devolves from there into a lot of misinformation and half stories and some facts. And, and then you don't know how to sift through it. And, you know, and I said to her, maybe you should like do a press release or do sort of a campaign to just inform people a little more specifically about what their budget is, or, you know, what their bill looks like and what it entails and how it builds into the future and, and, and just kind of get the information straight and, and put a stake in the ground on that. So I think that might be something if they can utilize that, that would be very helpful for them. And obviously for a whole bunch of other big projects coming along the way for us.
I mean, what they're, you know, it's just, it's not that there aren't ideas. It's just about our time to pull this stuff off, right? I mean, you know, we can do some reporting and we did some of this, you know, during the pandemic with, with our phones, right? And we can still do some of that. The, part of it is having a high enough production value. You want to have it look good. So people will watch it. And it's important that, and again, these folks do this all the time. I mean, the cameras they brought down were like this big and they were like, you know, fought, you know, was it UHD stuff, right? That they use as they're filming it now. It's clearer than real life. So they, and again, they do it regularly. So they boom, boom, they come in, they come out, they get it. And again, we have to do it all the time. I don't think we need to do this, you know, you know, every week or something. But, you know, there's been some key things like the flu shots, like, like the, you know, the entrance to town hall, like the elections. And again, I think helping package some of this stuff up, we've talked about doing something on finance, right? So Don and I are talking about also, one of the other things we could do is utilize Facebook more and Zoom. So we, we, we're going to try to do something this fall where we do some fit, you know, just kind of live talks. If people are at the table and we'll chat probably with the advisors, folks from advisory and, or, and, and talk and we'll have it open to questions. So people want to watch and ask questions from home and it'll be available on the web. We could talk about some of the, you know, not like a, like a three hour seminar, but maybe like a 20 minute quick snap. You know, we'll go through some of the things that people need to understand how the budget works. We're going to try to do some of those things because we can do this now. Don could be at home. I can be here. And we can do a nice Zoom chat, bring folks in and answer questions and then answer some live questions. We're going to do that, I think in November or December. And do some other live videos, which we've talked about doing, but now we have the tools that we've been have before to, to actually do these regularly. So I think we're going to try to do more of that and, and see how people respond. And some communities, if that's really cool, I don't think we're going to quite get to the level of some, some communities I've seen that do like these fun bunch of videos. You know, they want to did like a crazy cat video with, with city in Texas. I wouldn't have to go quite that far. But, you know, getting some of these things visual, even if it's just quick and short, just helps explain things. And the goal is to do more of that. In fact.
And the one, yeah, the one nice thing about social, the social media platforms is that you can get analytics. You can, you can understand how many people are really reading or reacting. And to the extent that you can build some of that around it, then that'll help us know where the information should be and should be pushed out when there is important information. So.
You know, one of the other things I have to say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Chris. I can go after you.
No, I was going to say, so one of the things that also does work with 143 and, you know, Don twisted my arm for a long time to get us to do the show. Because, you know, there's a couple of, there's some great shows that community had hosted for a long time and people, you know, they have other things to do in their lives. They move on. So I've been, I've been, I was drafted to hosting this classic common show, which I've been happy to do. And by the way, I'm happy anytime someone wants to take over. Actually had fun doing it. I've had departments like last week, we kind of scrambled a couple of segments we wanted to do that didn't come together. So Bill quickly offered up his special police officers.
Great.
Bicycle police and, and the folks doing their ATVs. So just a little behind the scenes, where are the kids, what are they doing? What's going on? And next week, we're, we're going to get the schools, I think, actually this, this week, I think, like a Pat Solon really wants to get into the schools and show what's going on. So people can see.
Great.
What's going on. And we, we, you know, we talked about getting into the fire department and getting into an ambulance, you know? So you can see what really goes on there. I mean, not, not a live person, you know, being saved hopefully, but I don't think they'll allow us to film that. But, but, you know, they're really mobile emergency rooms and people don't get to see them. Hopefully you don't get to see them, right? Except, you know, when you're, so, but people, you know, we're spending $40,000 on this thing. People should understand what it is and what the folks do. And I think some of the departments have actually, after they've gotten out of their shells, have had kind of fun doing it. I know there's some folks in the police department that love this. I think, I, I think we're going to finally get to a ride along and just show what it's like to patrol for a little while in Cohasset. And there's also great local stories, you know, the, the business community have been trying to get more of those folks engaged. So, you know, we're happy to partner on that. And I think it's important to tell the story of what people's tax dollars are going to every day, you know, what's happening. You know, and we, we did a great show. There was a great spot done on the Wheels on Wheels program showing what's going on. And I, I think those kind of stories lend themselves to videos. And I think they've been illuminating, you know, because Cohasset really is people volunteering and, you know, there's a great web of connectivity here. And Jackie Dorman's has had fun. She, we're actually planning to go to Government Island and, and talk about the things, next time you go to walk your dog or hang out. Some of the historic sites you might not even know are right there. So we're going to, I think, in October.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I have a Jackie thing to bring up in selectman comment period. But Carrie, I know you had a question or comment.
Yeah, I, I love the collab we're doing with 143. And I do think there is that need for the more formal videos, but I also don't think we live in a world anymore that people are expecting videos to be formal. And I think, I would love to see our town have both a Twitter and Instagram page in addition to Facebook. I know our police and fire departments do a really good job on Twitter. I do think we need that, but I also think that we need to get more comfortable doing quicker videos and storytelling on social media that we're seeing a lot of younger people do that isn't formal. And that's what people expect, you know, shorter clips of videos, less than a minute long, showing what's going on each day, showing quick pictures. We have such amazing technology with our phones now. I don't think we always are going to be needing to do as many formal things as we think. I think that a lot of our town employees and everyone can get more comfortable with that faster storytelling. And I think that will bring in more people that we're not reaching right now.
You know, amen. I just sat through a webinar for fundraisers and, and, and just a quick little, you know, walking literally with your phone in front of you through the woods and just saying, hey, I just had five minutes. I want to, you know, you know, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for us. Or, you know, I'm going to get my flu shot. Look at this. It's literally a minute and I can't even tell you how excited people are to just get that, you know, texted to them or sent in an email. It really doesn't have to be high production. And I come from a, a theater company that, you know, everything has to be staged and lit and costumed. And, and actually it doesn't. It's just those quick little thinking of you. Or here's how you can do this. And it can be as short as 30 seconds and it will make a real difference. So.
I just have, I just have one comment through all of this, and I don't want to be a wet blanket. But we should also be very aware that with the social media and all that being done by the government, I think we should be very, very careful that we, we don't delve into opinion, opinion journalism, that this is the government, we're running town government. And if other people want to do that, we can facilitate that. But I'm not sure the town needs to be necessarily a producer of all, of all of this. We have other vehicles that can do that. Not saying we shouldn't support it, but I think we should be very, very much aware of, you know, government always, you know, historically has the ability to indoctrinate. So we should be aware of that.
Yeah, I think we're just talking information. I hope that we're all this, you know.
My point exactly.
Right. Go down and look at your pumpkins in the window kind of thing. Yep.
Yes. And I'll address that in my selectmen's comments, by the way.
Great. Thank you. Pumpkins in the window?
Maybe that too.
All right. Anybody else for Chris? Otherwise, Corey?
Thanks. All right. So there's a lot there, but I just want to unpack a little bit to just kind of recap for people. You know, the thing that Chris mentioned in the beginning is videos. All of these Zoom videos, all these Zoom meetings with the different town boards are being recorded. And I think, you know, I've said it before, it's important to me that we get all these videos out in public. I don't like having recordings of citizens sitting on a hard drive somewhere, not in public. So thank you, Chris, for putting the resources to getting this forward. This is part of what I think is very important is just people understand how decisions are made. A lot of the questions I get from people is, you know, basically expressing frustration that they feel like things were done, you know, in a hidden process. So this is part of that and I hope we can continue that. Second thing, I brought this up a couple of weeks ago and I think I'm still a little bit concerned about it. Obviously, we're in the beginning stages of having a new, you know, communications firm or communication style here. But I still, I'm seeing the beginnings of a fracturing, which I think is just going to add more confusion. For instance, yesterday, water department sent a text about the water ban, but I don't see that on any of the, of the, you know, the town website or on this new COVID page. Having two separate websites is just functionally kind of a mess. So, you know, I just, I'm going to keep stressing this because I don't want us to, to develop these silos where there isn't one unified thing. I love that we're using an outside firm to kind of produce stuff. But, you know, I do want to keep the, the discussion open about, hey, what are we doing? And could this be done in a better way that's more centralized? Whether that's, you know, a staff person running it or a communications director formally, or we, we hand it off. I think we need to bring it together because I'm just, I'm seeing fraying happen. And I think that's just going to make things more difficult. You know, I don't know if anyone else has seen that type of thing, but my response on that. You know, I don't know if anyone else has seen that type of thing, but my response on that.
Could, could I suggest, because there's, there's a lot there that I'm really curious about, but I don't want to go too far down that rabbit hole. I, I told, you know, you and I have talked about the, the, putting the videos up. And obviously that's one thing, but I think it just in terms of general communications and developing a style, developing a, a rhythm.
Unified, you know, strategy.
Kind of the vision, communication strategy. Yes. And maybe that's something we'll put on a, a soon agenda. So that we can make sure we're all comfortable with how that's being rolled out.
Totally. It's not going to happen overnight. And I think, you know, this is part of the, the growing pain. So, so I'm encouraged. But at the same time, I want to keep, keep our antennas up for things that may be not what we want to continue doing.
Absolutely. That's why, you know, that's why a strategy and a plan is good and, and.
And you muted.
I think I breathed too much on it. Anyway, yeah, that's a sign. Let's start wrapping this up. But we'll put that on a future agenda. Thanks. Okay. Everybody good?
The last piece, the last piece was just engagement, community engagement. And I think. This board has taken that on as a, as a real effort to try to get more people on committees and all that. So, you know, continue to tell us how we can support that and how.
And it, it's interesting. And that's, I, I think maybe I might put that together with this communication strategy discussion on it, on an agenda to talk about. Because I had some ideas about just community engagement, the idea of all of these committees are now meeting virtually. And, and there, there are recordings and, you know, what can we do to generally support the committees differently now that the. Format is different and there are more people, you know, on the sidelines watching, I think, because they can jump into a Zoom meeting. So. I, I think we need to have a bigger discussion about how to handle, manage and encourage all of that going forward. So we'll do that. Chris, do you have anything for town manager update? Or is that just?
I think we've covered a lot and it's, and as I. If anyone has any questions for me, I think we, I've already covered, I want to touch base on in the reports already. So I'm good.
Great. Okay. Select board comments. Jack, you want to go first?
Yes. You, you, people may have noticed that on approving minutes that as, that I have abstained from voting on them. I thought I would explain the, the reason behind that. I'm clerk of the select board and they'll, and I'm. Somewhat supposed to oversee the accuracy of the minutes. And quite honestly. Our selection, our way of handling the minutes is, is archaic. Chris referred to it earlier and Corey's referred to it. And basically we have all of this technology and yet we have. We have the recordings which are kept, but they're kept on 143. And Corey's doing a very good job with that, but they're not necessarily public record. I think they need to be a public record. I also think that we have minutes right now. The, the minutes are taken by Tracy and then she writes up the minutes and. After they have been voted on by law, she, the, I think the town manager, but they can be thrown away. They don't have to be. They, I believe they should be archived. I believe until we vote on them, they are clearly under the open meeting law, part of. Of town records. They can only be disposed upon after the minutes have been. Passed by the select board or the, or the various boards. I think they should be kept, but I also think that all board meetings should be recorded. And that should be considered part of the permanent public record. And a couple of, of reasons why this is important. Number one, you know, we're no longer in the 19th century. We do have video. It's very often there are things that come up that you are not captured in the minutes and there are disputes on those facts. And the way to solve a dispute is the facts. And we have the ability to have those. So I think that we need to move forward. And make sure that this town adopts a policy that the, all meetings are recorded. And if they can't be recorded video, at least. The tapes and conservation, we kept the tapes. And I found out at one point, those tapes had been thrown away and I don't think they should. And then if we go back to ascertain something that happened in the past, it's very important for transparency to have accurate records. So I just wanted everybody to know that's why I'm abstaining. And I strongly urge this board to move forward. With drafting a policy which says that all public meetings shall be recorded. And that recording shall be considered a permanent record and part of, for, under the purposes of the open meeting law. So.
Thank you. This, the, the pretty substantive and I, I, I don't want to address it because it's not on an agenda and I think it's really worthy of an agenda discussion. I.
Why do we do that?
I would just like to say that, you know, everything we do in the practice that we have done is, is. Is meets open meeting law and the requirements and the council of, of town council. So I would like him actually to be, help us with that conversation. Because I think I've talked to you, Jack, before. He, I think he would, he, he would guide, give us guidance different from what I think you feel it would be optimal. So I think we need to have a very substantive conversation about that and make sure we come to an agreement amongst us as to how we want to go forward with that. So, great. Thanks for bringing that up.
I agree, but I'm not sure we're having a discussion on this. If, then, then I would say that nothing that I suggested. Suggests anything other than we add another layer of transparency and permanency to the records. I'm very much aware of what we do for town meeting. There are some tapes that have disappeared. I don't know the facts on that, but I don't think we necessarily have to go over. What may have happened in the past, but I think we want to make sure that going forward, we're very clear. I know what we did in conservation. We just passed a resolution. That the conservation commission directed that those tapes should be kept forever. And I think the town can do something in some way.
Yeah. And it is important to note too, that all of the Zoom meetings are recorded and, and are maintained. The question is the maintenance of those.
I don't think 143 should be burdened with doing that. I think it's a proper function of government to do that and to, to secure them. Corey's doing a great job with 143. I don't think 143 should be burdened with that. I think it's a, it's a municipal responsibility.
And I, I agree. That's why I think Justine is now taking over that and hopefully we'll get the, and of course that goes into the clerk's office. So we, we will work all that. Out in a discussion amongst all of us at a future meeting. So.
Yep, I agree.
Thanks, Jack.
All right, that, me. Were we going to discuss water ban during our topics that anticipated? Or I can, was going to say that.
We're not going to discuss it as a, as a topic, but you can certainly bring it up now.
Yeah. So just if, you know, some people have gotten texts, but we are now, the water department announced yesterday, we are in. Full water ban, which means no irrigation systems whatsoever. And regardless of the day of the week. And handheld watering only for like ornamental plants and vegetables, that kind of thing. We are. At critical levels and we haven't had any rain. So please limit your water usage. You know, we want to keep our reservoirs at healthy levels until we get through this. This happened before and we just have to adjust. Other thing is, thanks again to everybody that helped out, that's helping out with Safe Harbor and the Pumpkin Patch. That's really just, you know, Safe Harbor is a really special community with, I sat in a meeting and people that are really engaged. And I think that's just a special thing. So thanks to everybody that, that made that program happen and is, and is a part of it now. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Paul?
So I think I'll be the broken record, although the water ban, you stole my thunder, darn it. But yeah, again, the water ban is very important because if you drive by the Situate reservoir, it's empty on one side of the street. So we don't want that here and we do have water, but be careful. The other thing is get the, the flu shot. I can't underscore how important it is. That will help you through the, the winter. When the flu season hits, we can push down the numbers. We can prevent over. You know, overuse in the hospitals of people with the flu. In addition, complication with COVID plus the flu, it dramatically rises the mortality and morbidity. So the town's been very well. We've not had a lot of cases, but we need to keep the same compulsive caution with, you know. Masks and distancing and being just very careful with large groups. That's about it.
Thanks, Paul. Carrie?
Yeah, the voter registration deadline. If you are not registered to vote, I hope you are, if you're watching this meeting is October 24th. People can still register to vote. I know elections are coming up. Elections matter a lot. And I'm just really proud of how we've been dealing with things on a local level. I'm really proud of how great things have been going with our schools. As we're heading into Halloween and the holidays, people just need to stay vigilant and we need to try to keep our community safe. So we can keep. Our kids going to school in person. And so we can keep having some of the freedoms that we've been allowed to in our town. So. This is just really hard. And I know it's really frustrating every week and we're all really trying. To give this town as much freedom as possible and still so safe. And just thank you to everyone who's been trying as hard as all of, as all of us are. I know this is way longer than we ever expected it to be, but we're, we're holding strong.
Holding strong. And just good, good segue. I'll just, just kudos to. All of you on this board and, and the staff and the committees that have been meeting and really. I, I, I mean, it's just amazing how much work and how much progress we've made over the past couple of months while frankly, you know. Most of us are probably in grumpy moods because of everything else going on. So it's challenging and, and I'm just proud of the entire community. And then the people that have been doing the work of the municipal management. So thank you on that. Just throwing it out there, whether the board members would be available if we added a meeting on Tuesday, October 27th. We know at the very least that on the October 20th, we're going to have a liquor license hearing, which is. Probably going to be a good hour, hour and a half. And there's, you know, a financial update. We got the budget message and all the other. Items we've mentioned earlier in the evening. So you don't have to tell me now, but if you could get back to Tracy and or me. In the next 48 hours and let me know whether that's a possibility for you. And if, if, if most of, if all of us can do it, we'll do it. I, I'm not in favor of doing meetings where all of us can't be there unless it's. An emergency for some reason, or, you know, I don't want to plan a new meeting that we can't all be at. So let me know about that. And then. Also Jackie Dormitzer sent me an email earlier that I just want to update you on, which is that the Fisherman's Well marker, which we had. Approved, which is the engraved kind of a round granite stone in the Sydney Square, which is the green across from the Cohasset Harbor Inn, has been installed. So she recommends that we go and visit it and also thanks us for the support for that project. So that's another, another. Nice thing that's happened in the community recently. So, and that is it from me. We have two sets of minutes. From September 21st and September 22nd. Corey?
Um, I just, I, you know, I reviewed September 21st minutes and I've got some things that I like to kind of review and clarify. So if we could.
Hold off on those?
Hold off on 21st. I'm okay with 22nd, but 21st is one I'd like to go through a few more times.
That's fine. If you could send any changes that you want to Tracy. And that, that goes for anybody else. If there's anything in there that you, you would like edited it and then it'll come back to us for approval or discussion. At another meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion on the September 22nd minutes?
I moved that we approve the minutes from September 22nd, 2020.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Jack?
Abstain. Jack Raiton abstain.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I don't have any topics not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours. Thanks for the last three hours. And I will take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh geez. All right. A motion, a second, a roll call vote.
Jack Raiton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.